This conference will now be recorded.
I'd call the meeting to order. This, uh... It's Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at 12:02 PM. This is a meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in the main library, our meeting room, the lower level. This is a partially electronic meeting. It's being held that way because fully in-person meetings are not in part possible or impractical due to concerns for the health and safety of board members, staff, and the public, presented by COVID-19, and to follow the Governor's proclamation, the Mayor's Executive Order directing social distancing, and placing restrictions on gatherings. In-person attendance by the general public at any city of Davenport Public Meeting within its facilities are limited to 10 persons. Now have a roll call to establish the virtual meeting. Who is present? Tom Engelmann?
Here.
Sylvia Roba?
Here.
Craig Cooper?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Present.
Judy Lance?
Here.
Amanda Mado?
Yeah.
Maggie Mado?
Here.
Malavika Shikandi?
Here.
And myself, Steve Eming, is here. Okay, whoops, just a moment. Have to put the paper here. Also on the call, excuse me, at the meeting, wanted to add those as present, of Mary Ann McGinnis, who's the Davenport City Council liaison to the library, Laura Guinness, president of the Friends of the Davenport Public Library, Lexi Riley, Assistant Director of the Library, and Jennifer Williams, Operations Manager. Is there anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, and Tracy Morely, Development Director. Okay, so we've got everyone. So we'll continue on. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. They have a motion regarding the consent agenda. Thank you, Tom. And a second by Joe Heinrichs, thank you, Joe. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Hearing see, no, a call for the vote? All those, excuse me. Tom Engelmann?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yeah.
Craig? Craig, have a vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted.
It does, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Joe Heinrichs? Judy Lance?
Yeah.
Amanda Mado?
Yes.
Maggie Mado?
Yes.
Malavika Shikandi?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Hearing and seeing no one for the public comment, wanted the next item on the agenda. Reports and Communications. First item there is the Friends. Laura, do you have a report today?
Hi, everyone, it's Laura Guinness. Yeah, just a quick report, we're winding things down for year end, so not a ton of updates, but I did want to share that at our meeting last week, the Friends was able to ratify some bylaws amendments, so that was an important governance issue that we wanted to get addressed this year. Happy to have that taken care of before year end. We're still in the, you know, quiet phase of the public portion of the Capitol Campaign, so as I've shared in previous months, you know, we've sent out some letters and are asking our donors for support, and we're seeing some donations trickle in. We did have a little bit of engagement on social media for Giving Tuesday. I think that Tracy will probably, you know, has shared that we got a couple hundred dollars from that, so that's always, you know, nice to see. And I'm looking forward into next year, the Friends right now, I've tasked the group with thinking about what we want to do for next year, and setting some goals, so that way we can hit the ground running in January, making some kind of a boardwork plan for January. So that's, I think, about it for me, from the Friends, but thank you for the opportunity to give an update.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions in the board for Laura?
Laura, I was just going to mention that I read about the Friends in the Quad City Times, one of my former colleagues and friends had a $3 million estate, which was a shock to all of us, that he was, he was pretty frugal, but that's a lot of money for anybody, and that one of the organizations that he has endowed is the Friends of the Davenport Public Library, which I thought was terrific.
Yes, is this Tom speaking? I'm sorry, help by the voices, was that Tom?
This is Craig.
Craig, well, thank you, Craig, for sharing that, and a huge shout-out actually to Amy, I think Amy came across really beautifully in that article, so thank you for representing the grouping, yes, the Friends is very appreciative of that support.
And Laura, I'm looking forward to the Thousand Book Challenge mail I got yesterday, so I'm looking forward to sending the mailer back to Friends shortly.
Oh, I'm happy to hear that, Malavika. Tracy has really been doing wonderfully with our letters, these last few letters, I think, have been beautifully written, so I really appreciate Tracy's work on that.
Absolutely, thank you, Tracy, Laura, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next item under Reports and Communications is Committee Reports. First item there is Finance. Tom, anything for Finance today?
I did want to look at your budget, the budget, yeah. Forty-one percent through the year, and almost all of the expense items down right on that level, which is the thing. The only thing that kind of stuck out was the electronic equipment replacement was higher. I'm sure that is just simply a function of timing, you know, when things were flawed, because we get closer to the end of the year, I'm sure that will even out, you know, to where it is, where it should be.
Thank you, Tom. Next item under Committee Reports is Personnel. Amanda, anything from Personnel?
Uh, no, we completed the paperwork for Amy's evaluation, and that has been signed, and I believe Amy sent that over to the city, so her evaluation should be complete. Today, we're gonna just have a close meeting to discuss goals for the next year, but other than that, nothing pending.
Thank you, Amanda. Help with the decision.
Steve, Steve and all of us here, nothing, nothing much to add, but me and our neighbors in my neighborhood, we had a Zoom get-together, and I talked about the various library programs that the library is doing online, and also suggested and requested that they could, you know, either sign up for the email newsletters, and make use of the website to put holes and things like that, so just basically passing and sharing information with neighbors during a meeting, but nothing more. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is Director's Report. Amy?
Yes, so just a few things that are not in the report that was sent out, they indicated that they were going to start in the negotiations yesterday, and we set a record, and we got a tentative agreement in less than two hours, so that was really pretty amazing, so I think the hope is that those agreements will move to council for approval in the first cycle in January, so that would mean that we'll end up having a quick trustee meeting, I need to get a few more details on this, I'm not sure about that.
I cannot understand a thing she's saying, sorry, this is Marion. I don't know what the problem is, anybody having a problem?
This is Laura, I can't really hear her, there's just a ton of background noise.
But wasn't okay when everybody else was talking?
I'm sorry, I sent a chat message, I couldn't hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't do anything either.
I couldn't hear either.
It's echoing, the speakers, it just echoes when you're talking.
I'll try moving and see if that works.
I hear her just fine.
Okay, is this any better?
Hmm?
Yes, maybe, yes.
This does sound better.
Yes. So I was saying that my report indicated that we were going to be holding negotiations with the vibrant bargaining unit starting yesterday, and we already have a tentative agreement with them, so it took less than two hours, so that's really good news. There is, there's a possibility, at least, that this will come to city council for council approval the first cycle in January. If that's the case, we'll be looking for a quick special trustee meeting for the board to approve that agreement prior to that time, so that we can get things done in order. So that might be something that happens between now and the first committee of the whole meeting in January. There are a lot of items that are not, that were part of the old agreement, that by law can be part of the bargaining agreement anymore, so we'll be bringing those things to the trustees for approval as part of library personnel policy or a separate library administrative policy. So some examples of those things would be seniority hiring is not allowed anymore, the transfer and bump to avoid layoffs, that can be part of the bargaining agreement anymore, and a few other things, so we'll be looking at those as separate policies. So we have until July 1st to get that completed, because the current contract doesn't go into effect until July 1st, 2021. One of the big changes that I think was staff really, or at least the folks who are doing the marketing, really liked is that now that we're going to, now that we are open until 8:00 for nights a week in all three locations, we are able to offer staff a half-hour lunch period four days a week, so instead of working 8:30 to 5:30 and taking an hour lunch, staff will be able to work 8:30 to 5:00 Monday through Thursday and take a half-hour lunch. So previously, we couldn't do that, because we need to have staff in before we opened at 9:00, and they had to stay until we closed at 5:00. So this gives them a little more flexibility that way, and I think some staff at least that talk really excited about that change. Just a quick note, I did receive my recertification from the State Library of Iowa, so that's one of our requirements for our librarians' accreditation, so that's happened, that's good for another three years. Curbside service has been really popular since we ended it was shut down again, especially at Eastern, staff has really been running, and so we actually had to assign one or two extra folks out there to kind of keep up with the volume, so sometimes it might be hard, they're all at once, people getting to pick things up, so that's good news, and that's been well received. And then, so something just new, there's a program called SORA, S-O-R-A, and I couldn't tell you what those initials stand for, but it's a program through Overdrive, which is the company that we purchase our ebooks through, and this is a service that they offer free of charge to public school district. So Emily, our new services supervisor, was very persistent with some personal connections, gave the challenges that they have, and we got it through their curriculum committee, and they are going to be part of that program, and basically, they already share information with this company about student logins and things like that, or this ID, so no extra information needs to be shared with them, but it allows their students to access ebooks for free from this platform, and it will also include then ebooks that we purchase, that we buy as part of the library's ebook collection, but there's a whole lot of other material available as well. So I think the only, the last piece on that to get that implemented is the school district needs to facilitate downloading and app on all of the student prom books. They have those locked down, so they can do all that, so I think that's a really exciting, you know, partnership, and something that we're really pleased that we can offer to the schools, it really doesn't cost us anything, it gives us extra, way to provide extra access to the ebooks that we already purchased, but then for the students, it provides a lot of extra access at this time, when they don't have great access to their libraries, so I'm pretty excited about that one. And I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Amy? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda, under Reports and Communications, is hearing, our council liaison. Can I hear you?
Thanks very much, I really don't have anything to add today, we are, had our last meeting last week, council won't meet again until the first week in January, so, and then I had mentioned last, I think at our last meeting, our planning cycle, which is coming up, I still don't know, usually we'll get a list of, this is where staff and council came down on big goals, which sort of sets the agenda for upcoming budget cycle, those things don't move a lot, but they have changed over the last few years a little bit from councils in the past, but I don't know, I don't have that information right now, so we will wait for that, but just, I will be here over the holidays, if anybody has any questions or anything, I'm not planning to travel, so we'll be here, so that's really all I have right now, thanks.
Maya? Next item on the agenda is new business. First item there is motion to approve the library volunteer policy, which we discussed at our last meeting, we have a motion in that regard.
I'm approving the volunteer policy.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
I second Steve, Malavika, Malavika.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote on the motion to approve the library volunteer policy. Tom? Sylvia?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Joe? Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve closing the main library for the main library renovation project. I have a motion in that regard. Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
Second, this is Sylvia.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, now the motion is second to approve the closing of the main library for the main library renovation project. Is there any discussion? This is Tom. Is there some concept of the timeline here?
Yes, and so since the agenda came out, we received timeline from the contractor, so they presented two options to us, and our recommendation would be that we take the option where we would close two patrons on Monday, December 28th, and then we would reopen on or about March 15th of 2021. That finishes off the entire project, we would be able to tentatively reopen just for curbside service as early as February 17th. So that's the one we're looking at, that gets everything kind of done all at once. The other timeline they presented, we would, we would close until early February, so we wouldn't, we would reopen later, later in March. So, so what we were thinking about is, in terms of, we wouldn't have to close on the second one until later in February, but demolition is going to be happening, that will interfere with staff's ability to, you know, pick up the phone and understand what we're saying at curbside service and all that kind of thing, so we just really felt that it was better if we were gonna start having construction and people knocking on walls, and that noise that we just decided to close down, and then we'll be able to be open a little bit earlier, and with any luck, with COVID-19, we might be able to open for more services earlier, as opposed to right now, we'd be closed sooner, but we can't offer as many services right now. So we've had a couple different, different thoughts as we've been looking at that. Okay, so the dates would be, so to close Monday, the 28th of December, and then reopen no later than March 15th.
Any other discussion?
I guess one other question. How much of the government's and publicity to the general public, this will be occurring? I mean, I want the general public to understand that we're losing this day, and we're planning to reopen on this day, but you can't commit between here and here.
So our publicity buffs already have templates ready, they're just kind of waiting for the dates, so we can get that out, the press release out, get it out on our social media. So the impacts are going to be, you know, right now, we're offering curbside service here in Maine, and we're offering one-hour computer appointments, so they'll have time for, again, people who are coming in for their appointments to make sure that they're aware, we can tell them in person a little bit, as well as if we go to, or picking up goals, and then our staff will, again, start calling patrons who have the main library as their whole pickup point, to let them know that they're potentially gonna want to change that to their perimeter or east, so that they can pick things up there. So if we're talking about anything that's left on the whole stuff to be picked up on the 28th, we'll probably just package open mail to those patrons.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing, that's none, call for the board of the motion to approve closing the main library for the main library renovation project. Sylvia?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the Eastern Branch Cafe lease with Cafe de Marie. We have a motion in that regard.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Joe, can we have a second?
I seconded. I seconded.
Okay, Malavika? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the Eastern Branch Cafe lease with Cafe de Marie. Is there any discussion on the lease? Tom?
Yes. Is this, is this a bold, um, history?
Yeah, yeah, they still have that.
I'm trying to see if that's possible.
They're looking to expand a little.
No.
And they're, they're looking to, there's a delay in the start to April 1st, and they're hoping that number one, and that it might be a little better by then, but they also want to do, as the previous tenant did, they want to do some painting and things like that prior, and that actually works out well for us now, because we moved our curbside delivery operation at Eastern to the cafe space, because that's closer to the door, so we can do it faster, because staff did some printing, you know, on their, on their bin bits, and it was like 300 steps to fill one curbside order, and we were running out of time, and we were running the staff rag, and so we moved everything over to the cafe right now, so they're right now doing that space, so, so I think April 1st will be really good.
Any other discussion regarding the lease for the Eastern Cafe? Hearing and seeing, what's, yes?
Steve, no discussion, but I just wanted to share that I want them to really succeed with us, because they're a wonderful place, and they're a wonderful team, and it would be nice, you know, it would be nice for us, vice versa, I feel, so I want them to have much success.
Thank you.
This is, this is Laura, just chiming in here, I'm sorry, just to share also that Deanna, who owns Cafe de Marie's sister, Tonya, is on the Friends board, so it's nice to kind of, you know, see us supporting local community and individuals that have been involved with the library.
Thank you. Oh, we have a motion in second to approve the Eastern Branch Cafe lease with Cafe de Marie, call for the vote. Craig?
Yes, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yeah.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is old business, and there is none, and so the next item is closed session for the purposes of continuing the valuation of the library record, and before we go into that, I have a bit of a dilemma, because we have perfect attendance today for the meeting, but we don't, we only have the capability to get two or three people on by phone, and since I haven't heard from, we haven't heard from people that are planning to attend in person, we heard from some three, but, so we don't have enough capability on conference phone to get everybody involved. So I guess I wanted to, either, I guess the choices are either that we can go with the three people that have, that will try to get on by phone, we know we can get two for sure, try to get a third one, which is gonna leave some people out, which is unfortunate, and I really don't want to do such attendance today. The other option would be to delay this, or I could ask the Personnel Committee to meet with Amy to discuss goals, and come back with goals that way, or come out, come up with goals that way. come back with goals that way, or come up with goals that way. Is there any discussion on that?
Uh, this is Amanda. I'd be in favor of either pushing it or having the Personnel Committee talk first, just because I think we want to have as many people on the board actually involved in the final discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was my reasoning for setting it up this way. It's a continuation of the previous evaluations. Is there any other discussion?
Do you need a motion to table this? Yeah, let's do that. I know to table the closed session for the purposes of continuing the evaluation of the library director will allow Personnel Committee to come back with their recommendations.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to table the closed session and to have Personnel Committee conduct those discussions back to the board, whatever.
We have a deadline that we have to keep to this.
No. Thank you for asking. Okay. Did everyone hear Joe's question? He asked if we have a deadline for meeting this done, and we do not. So, just want to make sure everybody can hear that. Okay, so, we have that motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not a call for the vote? Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Okay, so, with that, thank you, everyone, for that. Appreciate it. Didn't see that one coming. So, okay. Anyway, okay, next item on the motion, next item on the agenda, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Who is it? Malavika? Thank you, Malavika. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to adjourn the meeting.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
If there's in favor, please say aye.
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 Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Motion and time in favor of the library.